Thank you.
Okay. City manager, are we going to have the presentations?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As directed by the city council, we have two speakers for you this afternoon to speak on the pros and cons on CCA. Starting things out, we have Howard Choi, who will kick things off this afternoon. The bios of Howard and Jim are in the agenda backup, but just a sentence or two about Howard. He has spent 30 years in the energy industry, most recently working as the L.A. County Energy and Sustainability Manager. In that role, he advocated for local government engagement on energy issues and has been very active in this whole discussion. So, welcome, Howard, and you can start things off this afternoon.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and Pro-TM and Council for having me here to present on this topic, and thank you, Fred, for that introduction. I'm a CCA proponent. I've spent my entire career in the energy industry. As this initial slide indicates, I should have corrected it. CCAs are not transforming the energy industry. The energy industry is transforming before us. CCAs are simply a part of it. And I believe, in my short number of slides, I think I'll show you why I think CCAs are important for local governments, for local policies, and for its citizens. You've all seen this slide, I'm sure. It's probably trademarked by now as the "How to Explain CCA Very Simply." The problem, though, with CCA is it is extremely complicated. It's 2/3 of a utility business that has existed for decades and has been a regulated monopoly by the investor-owned utilities for all of that time. So, you see the first part of it, talking about procuring wholesale power. I heard some snippets about why that is problematic. I'm not going to talk a lot about the wholesale procurement business, except to say that there are municipalities that have been purchasing wholesale power for decades, the size of Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, Anaheim, Banning, Colton, Roseville, Sunnyvale. These are all municipal utilities. I didn't mention the city of L.A. because they sort of stand out from that crowd. You don't really want to associate with L.A. DWP. But this is something municipalities have done for decades, purchasing wholesale power on the market, investing in power plants to supply their citizens with power. I heard another speaker mention that municipalities have been in the water utility business. They've been in the waste disposal business. So, I don't see this as a huge, huge stretch for cities. The fact that they can purchase power and deliver it to end-users cheaper than the investor-owned utilities should not be a surprise. The municipal rates are lower than the investor-owned utility rates. The current CCA rates are lower than the investor-owned utility rates. So, I -- as complicated as it is, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. It's being proven to be not a hurdle for the CCAs. Where the industry is transforming, though, is -- and I'll just list these very quickly. You already see what the state is doing in policy and in legislation about delivering clean power to its citizens. Customer choice is coming back. CCA is really a customer-choice program. And the customer choice for individual ratepayers is also being considered at the legislature and at the PUC to return. You remember all those calls you got at dinnertime from Enron, as well as other people saying, "Hey, buy your power from us. We're going to save you 10%." That is likely to come back. There are all kinds of new power providers selling power, storage, and other services into the grid at the transmission level and the distribution level. The commission has set up, the Public Utility Commission, has set up rules and regulations under which the grid operators can purchase that power. There are all kinds of new technologies available to the end-user: EV charging, storage, solar panels, solar-plus storage. This flood of new technologies is transforming the market and how the grid operates as we speak. The management of the grid itself is changing. It will no longer be at the sole decision of the utilities, the investor-owned utilities, how the distribution grid will be designed, managed, and operated. The utilities will be taking investments that they make in the grid and developing programs to use those funds to purchase energy efficiency, distributed generation, storage, EV charging from third parties to provide it as a way of managing the grid. Those proceedings are ongoing at the commission right now. End-user programs like energy efficiency are being taken away from the investor-owned utilities. The most recent energy efficiency decision told the utilities, "Take 60%, 70% of your programs and give them to third parties to administer and implement." And CCA -- and this is a lot of what I wanted to talk about on my presentation. That third part, the customer and the "you," I don't hear a lot of discussion about what the CCAs can provide at that level. And that's what I really wanted to spend some time on. So, why, and again, in your case, it's not why join a CCA, it's why not evaluate a CCA if more affordable energy services can be provided in your community in the form of lower rates. I heard a lot of talk about higher green rates. We have a lot of cities in L.A. County that don't care about more green power. They just want lower rates. Our first analysis showed 6%, and there are a number of cities that said, "If you can give us 6% lower rates, we're in." Some cities said, "We want 100% green as the only choice for our cities." That can be done, too, for a CCA. And then, these rates can encourage customer behavior or customer utilization, a lot of these technologies. We need electric vehicle charging during the peak solar production time. I think you've read that some solar in the state has to turn off in the middle of the day because there's not enough demand for it. Well, a CCA can design a rate that encourages people to charge their cars in the middle of the day during peak solar to use that solar power. You can -- the CCA, as I said, develops its own energy efficiency programs using ratepayer money. So, your ratepayers can fund your energy efficiency programs in your city. You don't see energy efficiency programs provided by the investor-owned utilities from city to city. You don't see rates from the investor-owned utilities provided city by city. I would bet that you never will either. I believe local governments can design better end-user programs than the investor-owned utilities because they have the needs of their constituents at stake. Edison, I'm going to try to just say "investor-owned utilities" and not say Edison, but if I slip, you know what I mean. The utilities, in my opinion, as managing accounts that were customers of theirs in L.A. County and as a partner of the investor-owned utility in L.A. County, they're not necessarily concerned, in my view, with local results or local policies. They have a complete set of different objectives. Investments in local energy projects, a big, big driver in a lot of the CCAs that are being created now, is to get away from the development of the large plants in the middle of the desert and have all this power exported into the load base, but start developing local distributed or local renewable power, local utility-scale projects. The experience of the more mature CCAs are that there are some people that are willing to pay more than the incumbent utility if they know the power is renewable and they know it's coming from a local source. And yes, we understand about the milkshake analogy, and even the local power gets put into the milkshake. Nonetheless, you're developing a local project with local jobs. CCAs have the ability to require local worker hiring for those projects if they so desire. So, there's a jobs impact, a local jobs impact. And then, the grid constraints in reducing outages. This is, I think, a huge factor for CCAs. Edison or the IOUs will remain the distribution grid operator. That's not going to change. The grid has problems. We all know that there are certain areas where there are constraints. Too much power is coming through at some time, or it's at the end of the line and there's other challenges on the grid. Historically, even up to today, the utilities would expand the grid, upgrade it. That's a capital investment. They make a guaranteed 10%, 11%, 12% rate of return on those investments. Those models are changing. The utilities will soon be told, "See if you can go out and find what you need in the communities to resolve those grid problems," whether it's more people doing energy efficiency, more EV charging, or other consumption at the right times, more storage, or more solar panels on a certain part of the grid. Well, the CCA, with their ability to design their own programs and set their own rates, is the perfect partner of a grid operator to achieve those outcomes. And if the PUC accomplishes its objective, which is to get the utility the same rate of return for buying those results as they would get if they invested in the grid, then they're impartial to how they get those results. That's coming. The proceedings are ongoing at the commission for that now. So, what I want to say in summary about CCA is, we, as interested stakeholders, as local governments, this is a long-term program. This is a long-term objective. This is a long-term policy. I don't think we should fixate on the rates. I don't think, to be quite honest, most of your constituents are even going to understand that they're saving 4% from the Edison rate when the only way they can see it is on a single line item on their bill, and what they pay for energy changes every month anyway. It'll be a nice story that you can tell them, and it is a good reason to do a CCA if there is savings. But that's not the biggest objective, in my mind. The community benefits that can be achieved by a CCA are the important factor. And my mission nowadays is to go out and tell communities that there's a bigger picture here. And I'll leave it with this, especially in your community. If the CCA is responsible for purchasing the electrons that are the power for your constituents, and you go out in the market to get bids or to get responses to your solicitations for that power, are you going to accept somebody repowering a plant on your beach to provide those electrons, or will you go find it someplace else? You've got that power now. So, I will leave it at that and certainly look forward to any questions you might have.
Mr. Chow, there's a question from our Councilwoman, Hardy.
Yeah, I want to ask a question of both speakers tonight. Southern California Edison seems to be supportive of the city creating a CCA, and I don't understand why they would be supportive of creating competition for their business. What is your point of view on why they would do that?
So, Edison makes no rate of return. They make no profit on the energy supply business or being the biller, the person who delivers the CCA bill, to the customers. So, it's not a money issue for them. And I believe Edison, more than the other IOUs, see the transformation of the utility system to where they're going to be the best grid designer, operator, manager that they can be. They're going to go all-in on making the grid of the future. And to be quite honest, procuring wholesale power, they have to go through a rate case at the -- or they have to go through a proceeding at the Public Utility Commission. It can be as long as three years. They probably spend millions of dollars in regulatory resource, lawyers, et cetera, in those proceedings. And sure, they get to pass those types of costs through to their ratepayers, but I think it's just a big headache that they're happy to get rid of. As a matter of fact, we've spoken with the president of Edison and his executives, and well, those might have been off-the-record conversations. I'll just say, we've spoken to them, and I believe at the highest levels, they don't see CCA as a threat.
So, what you're saying is that they would see in the future that they're going to be all about maintaining the grid and less about having customers to pay for it?
Yeah. There's two parts of the bill, right? There's the electrons, and there's the wires. They're always going to have the wires unless you decide you want to take those over, too, and then you'll really see thermonuclear war with them. But on the energy side, it's all their costs are a straight pass-through. It's not a financial advantage to them.
Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Chow. If you don't mind, and I'll ask of the other gentleman, but I -- the CCAs are still regulated by the CPUC, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no rewiring required within the city to be a member of the CCA?
No.
And if we were to hire a CCA, wouldn't they help the city determine what the rates would be or how that would be? It wouldn't be necessarily determined by myself or whoever's on the council?
I would hope that's the case.
Yeah, I'm asking it on purpose so people could, you know, okay. So, there's no additional staffing required at the city level?
Depending on the governance structure you wanted, there could be. But a city the size of Huntington -- should you even decide you wanted to do it on your own as opposed to with a group of cities?
Correct.
A few bodies here and there is de minimis compared to what you're going to pay to go out and buy the power on the market.
And wouldn't that be a -- wouldn't that make sense to have a study done so a city could interpret whether that makes sense for them to do that or not?
I think as electeds, considering this, I think it's a matter of due diligence to have a study done.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering my questions. Anybody else? Oh, go ahead, Billy, and then Mr. Peterson.
Just a quick question. I'm just curious. In talking to other legislators, with the new regulations coming down from the state, do you anticipate a shortage of electricity in the future?
No. The folks I've talked to, the suppliers, the developers, the state regulators, we are in an oversupply situation right now in the state. And don't forget that the CCAs are not adding any load to the status quo. They're just switching who's the supplier.
Okay. And a follow-up with that. In your experience, is there a cost savings to the cities that have implemented a CCA?
So far, every CCA I've looked at, the rates are lower than the incumbent IOU.
Can you give me a ballpark of how much of a decrease in the cost of electricity percentage-wise?
5% on the overall bill, even though the energy component is about half the bill. People get confused if you break it up. So, we in L.A. County say, "You're going to save 5% on your overall bill."
Okay. So, could you tell me what you think the greatest weaknesses in a CCA is for a city?
The greatest weakness, I believe, right now, someone mentioned the PCIA, right? The power charge indifference adjustment. The utilities have gone out with 20-, 30-year contracts to buy power for their customers. They never thought this would happen. Those contracts can't just go away. The developers have to be paid, and as the CCA takes customers away, the CCA has to pay that difference to the utility. Now, a lot of people say, you know, "We have no idea what that is. That's a great, big, black box." The PUC has just announced a new proceeding to figure out that, we'll just call it a stranded cost, the difference between their current contracts and what the market is. So, very roughly, the CCA is responsible for paying that difference back to the utility. The important thing about that, though, is the CPUC has to get it right. If it's indeed, and I'm oversimplifying, if that stranded cost is the difference between Edison's contracts and the market, then it's only fair that the CCA should make up for that because Edison's remaining customers can't have their rates raised because of CCA. So, I'm sorry I'm going on, but this is the biggest risk. The PUC needs to get it right. They can't get it overly wrong. But if it's as simple as, "Let's make sure the number's right," we're hopeful they'll get it right.
What is the cost of implementing a program like this for the size of a city like Huntington Beach, from your experience?
The cost of...
Implementing a program like this. What is the cost of putting a program like this in place?
Well, the cost would be getting started because once you're in operation, all your operating costs are recouped through your rates. So, the costs are your study. And then, until you're in operation and recoup those costs in rates, you will have to find either upfront money or a startup loan. My guess, I'm just guessing, okay, just so you have a frame of reference, for a city just like Huntington Beach, to get started, you might need $2, $3, $4 million. Not 10, not 20, not 30. And then, you can recoup that once you start getting rate returns.
So, for a city this size, I'm just curious, how long do you think it would take to recoup that to $2 or $3 or $4 million?
A year or less. Just, again, a frame of reference. It depends on the gap between your rates and Edison's rates. If you want to go right up to Edison's rates, as high as you can, you'll pay your loan off faster. If you want to have the lowest rates you can, but your loan, your financing is a part of your rate collection, you can have it be however long you want.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
One more question from Mr. Peterson.
So, along with that cost, you did bring up that CCAs invest in local projects. So, if we're buying power from somewhere, so are we overcharging to have this money come into the CCA so that we have it to give out to projects? I mean, I thought we were buying energy, paying that price. So, there's, it sounds like there's a difference in what it costs and what we're actually charging to, one, pay back this bill, and, two, to come up with more money to pay for local projects. Is that what you're saying?
I would say yes. In general, to develop a smaller, more local project is probably more expensive than what your proportionate share of a large plant out in the desert would be. But you'd have to do the math and see what kind of an impact that would have on your rates if you wanted to do it that way. You probably wouldn't or couldn't replace all of your power with local projects, but if it's 5%, 10%, and it's whatever percent higher than if you bought it from the desert, you know, you do resource planning to make sure your rates can absorb those incremental costs.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Wouldn't it be a possibility that a city could join with another city and maybe another city and work as a group together to make it even more effective for that area?
So, the short answer to that is yes. There are multiple models out there. I'd say three or four models out there where you could work with an existing CCA, you could partner with other CCAs in your region, you could partner with CCAs in other parts of the county.
All right. Thank you so much for your questions. The next speaker, where is John?
Thank you.
Oh, there he is.
Just a quick background about Jim Phelps, just to be consistent while he sets up here. Jim is a graduate of University of California, has worked in engineering and construction business for the past 37 years. He specializes in redesign and upgrade of evaporative heat transfer equipment for conventional power generating units. He's also fluent in utility rate structures, rate analysis, and many of the regulatory aspects that feed into his work analyzing CCAs. So, welcome, Jim.
First, I just want to say that I have a lot of ground to cover with you. I'm going to try to compress it, try, in 20 minutes. I have to ask you before I get started. Is this the most in-depth that you all have had in terms of CCA, talking to people who know CCA and getting feedback from them? Or has there been, have there been other workshops or other presentations to you?
Everyone's experience probably is a little bit different. As far as right here at the city, this is it?
You need to go into more depth than we're going into here, and I'm going to try to do that for you, and I'm going to try to stay in 20 minutes. But you, there is a lot of information out here that you just aren't getting and you aren't hearing, and I'm going to try to cover it for you. I'm going to try to bring my background. I'm not some activist, somebody says, who flew in from Northern California. I've been an engineer in the power business for most of my life, and I know CCA as well or better than anybody in California, especially on the consumer side of the equation. Now, I do want green power. I want clean power, and I think CCA could be good, but the way it's been rolled out right now, no way. And there's an adjective I'd like to put in between those two words. I'm not going to. So, let's start. Nine years ago, a group showed up in my town, in Marin County, much like this. The crowd was a little bit larger than this, and the people on the dais were all jacked up. They were all charged up. They were jumping up and down and saying, "I'm all charged up, and I'm ready to switch. I'm all charged up, and I'm ready to switch." And I watched that guy, and I thought, "Is he on drugs? What is he talking about? He doesn't have a clue how complex the energy business is or what he's trying to get into." We've come to witness, experience, CCA, the Marin Clean Energy Model, which has been adopted and replicated at other CCAs. It is flawed. It is misleading. It is not transparent. It is not local. It is not friendly. Like SCE, where you want to go down and talk about your bill, good luck, at least in our experience at Marin Clean Energy. And according to one state regulator, it's fraudulent. So, we'll get into that. Yes. It is pushed by, and there's an acronym that I use, CLAW, Consultants, Lawyers, and Wholesalers. CCA is pushed by the CLAW group. They use munis, municipalities such as yourselves, to launch community choice aggregation. It is a very complex business, and as nice as it sounds, gee, we'll get some of the people from the council or people on staff to come and join and figure out our electric bills, there is no way, if we use Marin Clean Energy as an example, there is no way that's going to happen. This is so complex, and you guys, if you're in a decision-making capacity, one of you or two of you may be on the board, this is the way it goes. And then, after a year or two, you'll cycle off, and somebody else will come on. After a year or two, my gosh, that's just about when you've got your experience. I have notes and minutes from Marin Clean Energy where they have people on that board that have been on for two and three years voting on stuff that they don't have a clue what they're voting on. Could you tell me, Mr. Consultant, what's the difference between Category 2 and Category 3? Now, if I use too much Category 2, do we bank that and carry it forth as a bundled delivery? Or is this an unbundled delivery that is a real-time transaction? I mean, they don't have a clue. The consultants run this stuff. I'm going to skip through some of these slides because I am going to try to streamline this for you. So, you have them in your packets, and if you want to go back to them in the Q and A, you certainly can. I'm going to focus on three issues. I'm going to talk about your savings and your municipal liability. I'm going to talk about choice, and it is not a real transparent choice. Some people will say, "Oh, of course, you get to make a selection." Those people know what's going on, but most people don't. And clean energy. Is it clean? How clean? We're going to get into it. So, your savings, Mr. Choi talked about, he said it's about half of your bill, the generation line. These are your line item components that roll up into a bundled bill for Southern California Edison. Every month, you pay a lump Every month, you pay a lump sum bill. If you had the capability and you could enroll, you'd have line items that corresponded to each of those lines. Now, Mr. Choi said about 50%. I beg to differ. He may use a different database than I do. Mine is based on real data from residents here in your town. And based on those calculations, about seven data points, we came up with about a 30% differential. So your total bill, if I unbundle it, and I'm looking at generation, about 30% of it is constituted by generation. That's what we're talking about on CCA. So if somebody says, "I can save 5% on your bill," well, for these people, it's 5% of Mr. Choi talked about the PCIA, and I'm glad, I'm going to try to blow through this. Right now, what we see there on the left is a, that's the cost for Southern California Edison. For the generation, a typical person in your town has a bill on the generation of about $70. If you go into CCA and you get a 4% rate reduction, they save $2.85. Now, there are people in this room that can come at that and say, "Mr. Phelps is wrong and it's 50%, and his numbers are all off." I'm just telling you, these are the numbers I've gone through. You guys, before you decide on this, you need to know these numbers because there are some huge financial liabilities that this town, this city gets locked into. And that is a number that you ought to be weighing it against. What are you doing for your residents? $2.85? For me, that's not even lunch money. So on top of that, we have a PCIA. And Mr. Choi was correct, that is getting litigated. On July 10th, the administrative law judges at the CPUC approved for the PCIA to get heard or reevaluated. And it's either going to go forth as a PCIA or what's known as a portfolio allocation methodology, and I'm not going to get into that unless you ask in the Q and A. But we don't know what that is on top. I think it's going to go up, I don't know. I do believe it'll go up, but I don't know. And there are other people who are going to say it's going to go down. That's just my gut intuitive feeling. So you take your savings that you get with CCA and you add PCIA on top of that. You get billed that every month on your bill from Southern California Edison. It's billed per kilowatt hour and it's billed per metered account. So if you have one electric meter hanging on the side of your house, you're going to get one bill and it's going to show how many kilowatt hours you used and a corresponding PCIA or exit fee. Now, there are people who say, "That's a shakedown. And I don't like having to pay that. Can't we get away from those guys at Southern California Edison? I mean, my goodness, I'm just trying to go out and start something on my own." And Mr. Choi was correct. Edison enters into just a series of long-term contracts on behalf of its ratepayers. It says, you know, "I've got so many megawatts or gigawatt hours, I've got to have power, I got to go ahead and buy, I got a plan." And then CCA shows up one day, which is fine, and they say, "We're going to start switching people automatically into our program." Automatically. If you don't want to be in it, you got to opt out. There's your choice, which we'll get to in a moment. But that, oh boy, now we're going to court. That guy in the middle, that's the CPUC. The guy kissing the ring is a consumer, and of course, that's Southern California Edison with the rose on his chest. So what is, what, real terms, what real life? I've heard you guys ask, "Well, what are CCAs doing to save power?" And I pulled this off of a recent Marin Clean Energy board packet. The column on the right shows, they are saying that they save between PG&E and between Southern California Edison. Now remember, these guys have been in business for seven-plus years. If there's anybody who can get it right, it's those guys. I mean, they're big, they certainly know what they're doing, and they're saving us a whopping less than 1/10 of 1%. Actually, if you do the math, it's 6/100 of 1%. That's their math, I didn't make it up. That's what we get. After all the fluff and pomp and circumstance, that's what we get. But you know what else we get? Behind the scenes, we get CLAW. We get the consultants, the lawyers, and the wholesalers who are running these things and making obscene amounts of money. Now, if there's another way to run them, great. But experience shows the way these are rolling out, and it's not just Marin Clean Energy, the CLAW is everywhere. We just had one, the consultants, lawyers, and wholesalers, just, they wrote a business plan for a CCA that was getting discussed today. And on the agenda, the guy who wrote the business plan that said, "Yeah, we should go ahead and do this," is circling back around for a gigantic contract. Now, do you see a problem with that? I sure do. Here's another problem that we have at Marin Clean Energy that's not come out. We found this, I and a couple of other people found this in their financials. Now, they launched in May of 2007, so they're, or 2010, so they're seven-plus years old. In 2010, they had a bank account that they built up of $10 million. We think by 2018, it's going to be 50. Now, my question is, what's a government entity, not-for-profit, run by the CLAW entity, building up that kind of cash behind the scenes? What are they doing? That money belongs to the ratepayers, especially when CCA showed up on the scene and said, "You know what, we're going to cut your guys' prices. That's why you want us. Some people don't want clean energy? Great, we're going to cut your prices." Then what the, are you doing with all that money? Because you sure as heck aren't giving it to the purchasers, to the consumers. So let's take a look at what's going on at LACC E and their business plan. This is right out of it. They say, right, they say that their first impact is that they're going to lower electric bills for LACC E customers. I read that and I was jumping for joy. I said, "Right on, good for you, bring it on, that's what we want, we want lower prices." And then I read a little bit further. And that first line is, "It should be noted that the rate comparisons, those savings, the 6% savings that Mr. Choi was talking about, that's an assumption that all the savings would go toward rate reductions." Why aren't they talking about that instead of out saying, "We're going to save 6%"? They aren't. What they are doing is they're saying, if you read the text, it's buried in these 100-page business plans, they say, "It's likely that they'll set up a financial reserve account for use at other times when needed." What? A financial reserve account for other times? Hmm, when needed, huh, when is that? Says who? Meanwhile, the $50 million bank account continues to click away in the background. Now, I owe you guys an apology, and I found this this afternoon in my hotel room when I was getting ready for this meeting. I highlighted the wrong part of that sentence. You see, if you read the second part of that sentence, it says, "And/or try to accelerate payoff of startup and initial operations financing." I should have highlighted that. What was I doing? And you want to know why? Let's go back and look at these numbers. You got to read this very carefully because this is written by the CLAW group. And these things are very fine, finesse language, and it goes in, and the actual benefit they bring to the communities is zilch. So let's go back and look. Now, remember, Marin Clean Energy launched in 2010. Initial startup operations? And they're still piling up cash in 2018? I'll let you guys think about that, but I think that's rotten. But you guys can draw your own conclusions. So, here's what you don't hear. People come to you and they say, "Hey, you know, you really want to do this because this CCA is great. It has this thing called the financial firewall." Have you guys heard about that? Has anybody talked to you about a financial firewall? Nope? Have you thought that maybe your general funds might be at risk? Anybody thinking about that? So let me assuage your concerns right now. According to the untried law is, if you set up a JPA and you put certain language in there and your debtors agree to accept it, your general funds are not at risk. You can walk away. I have to tell you right now, there's no way I'm going to make my 20 minutes, but I'm going to go on here, and I hope I'm doing you guys, this is going to save you, this is huge. There's no way that... Let me go back to this. So, in the JPA agreement that you'll have to sign, the Joint Powers Authority Agreement that you'll have to sign, and you'll do it whether you join LA or you go on your own and then you have other municipalities join you, you will form a joint powers authority. If you don't, your general funds are at risk. So I'm telling you, I'm begging you, please, form a JPA if you're going to get into this. Don't go it alone. But if you go into a JPA, here's what happens on these, and they all use the same boilerplate language. The highlight, certain continuing liabilities, huh? Power purchase agreements, uh-oh. Okay, so the power purchase agreements, they're going to buy volumes of megawatt hours for certain lengths of time, and they buy multiple contracts, and they overlap and they extend. And they do that on purpose to spread risk, and it's just the way it goes. Somebody comes to them with a good deal and they go, "Yeah, we'll buy that, we'll start it in 2020, and we're going to go through 2027." So they don't all end on one day. They continue and they overlap and they expire, and then typically, when one expires, another starts. It's just the way of the nature of the beast. But you guys, when you sign up for this, you're responsible for those power purchase agreements if you try to get out of the JPA. Now, why would you try to get out? I mean, for goodness sakes, this sounds great. This is competition and wonderful and wow, except for this whole risk thing that this guy from Northern California is talking about, I wish he'd get on a plane and fly home. If you guys want to change your mind at some point in the future, you are not getting out of this JPA. You are locked in forever. Now, I want to ask you a question before I go on. Because you may say, "Well, why would we ever want to get out? I mean, that's a ridiculous kind of supposition." Can somebody tell me, and please, just shout it out, and if you all want to encourage, bring it on.
Excuse me, Mr. Phelps, we can't respond to your questions.
So, that's fine, thank you. So let's just assume that your unfunded pension liability is in the high hundreds of millions of dollars. Let's just assume that. 30 years ago, nobody would have said that the city would have that kind of a liability. And yet, here we are today with that liability. So I would ask you just to consider, if you join, if you sign up for something with this kind of language and you want to get out, you're not. Do you ever want to get out? I don't know. But 30 years ago, did you think you'd have this kind of a liability? No. The other problem that I have with this, and I would never execute a contract with this kind of language, but it's in there, it's the continuing liability for, look at that, involuntary termination. So you could conceivably be asked to leave, and you have to pay your power purchase agreement liabilities. Now, I don't know about you, but I would never sign a contract with somebody that says, "Hey, we have the right to fire you, and oh, by the way, when we fire you, you have to pay us money." That is ridiculous. And it's in there. And if the JPA guys respond, and they will, they're watching and they'll watch, they'll watch a recording of this, they're going to say, "Well, Mr. Phelps is wrong, we would never do that." And my question is this, if I'm wrong, what's that language doing in the agreement? So you think you're leaving the JPA for $2.85 a month? Consumer choice, it's the second of the three points, and I'm going to try to speed through this. When you opt out, when these programs launch, by law, they have to send out four mailer cards. Those are cards that you get in the mail, and they say, "Hey, welcome," and this is this little thing, and if you want to get out of this CCA, you can. And you get four of those over about a two-month period while they're enrolling you. Now, I want you to, I'm making a point here about how the opt-out is gamed. Because this is choice, but you better know what's going on because it's not choice for a lot of people. If you look at line one and line two, those have four cards? Great, that's what they have to do by law. Now, at Richmond, when Marin Clean Energy was expanding and they went into Richmond, they said, "Let's do an extra card and let's send a letter." And I love that, I applauded that, I said, "That's transparent." I like it. That's clean. But look what happened to their opt-out rate. It dropped, it jumped from 20 to 30, a 50% increase, and they went, "Oh, wait a minute, we can't have that. That's bad for business. That's no way to build a business." So they jumped back, they dropped back on the next phase down to four cards. And in the process of dropping down to four cards, you notice that the opt-out rate also went from 30% to 15. That's pretty good. How'd they do that? How the heck did they do that? In this atmosphere of choice, transparency, and honesty. In their board minutes, we find the following. The MCE call center says, where the arrow is, 15% retention rate for opt-out requests. So what I'm reading here is, somebody at Marin Clean Energy, when a consumer calls in and says, "I want to get out of this thing," they're lobbying to stay back in. Now, I've read the law that launched this, AB 117. And I didn't find anything in AB 117 that says, "Oh, by the way, you guys can man the opt-out lines, and you also have a right to lobby people to try to keep them in your business." I had to get out of it from my mom. It took me a half an hour to get out. Not easy. So, if you ask Marin Clean Energy, you go, "What's going on?", they may say, I haven't, but I'm just going to do a little role play here. They may say, "Well, Your Honor, it's not us, it's AnswerNet. They control our opt-out lines, they're the guilty party, sir, we didn't have anything to do with it." And then you dig a little bit deeper and you go, "Well, AnswerNet is owned by Noble Americas." "Oh, Noble Americas is contracted with Marin Clean Energy, that doesn't feel so good, but I don't know, maybe there's, maybe we can, okay, maybe we can get through that somehow." For me, it didn't feel too good. Opt-out transparency. And then we look a little bit deeper and we go, "Well, now, wait a minute, Noble Americas is owned by Calpine. That's one of Marin Clean Energy's big energy suppliers." So, opt-out transparent, that's what you have with opt-out. They have a cottage industry of people who run the opt-out programs, and they know how to keep people involved, they know how to tailor it, they know when to do the opt-out programs, what time of year. That's it. So, next thing, and I'm going to try to just go through this, you've got to see it. Renewable energy certificates, and one of the people here talked about this. This is the backbone of the CCA, it's in all through the LACC E's business plan, it's specific, and then it's alluded to, and then by omission, it's a big part of their rollout. A rec works like this, it's just a piece of paper, a renewable energy certificate. So you see at the top, there's a dirty power plant, and Southern California Edison buys that, and they sell it to you, and it comes to you on the left side as dirty power. On the right side, Marin Clean Energy, or not Marin Clean Energy, but CCAs buy the exact same power, but they slap a rec on it. It's just a piece of paper. It's just, don't think any more than that. It's just a piece of paper. And they sell it to you as clean. Pardon me, I'm going to get a drink of water here.
Are you open to taking questions from council people?
Sure, I do have a little bit more I need to finish.
Okay, all right.
But can I, let me just do this first. I want you all to see something. Well, that's good water. I brought this down from, it says it's straight from the source, straight from the spring, pure, clean water. I brought some water for you, also. Anybody thirsty? I got this at the local slough. Anybody want to try it? No? Well, how about if we do this? This is my, this is my clean water. I'm going to take the label off my clean water, and I'm going to put it on my slough water, my dirty water. Now, this label says it's pure, clean, from the mountain source, it's everything you'd want in water. There it is, on the bottle. Who's thirsty? Anybody thirsty now? Because that's exactly how a renewable energy certificate works, exactly. And that constitutes the majority of CCA's clean energy. Most of the clean energy that you get is from these guys. Those are some of the biggest coal-fired power plants in the West. They buy it, while they're buying it, the EPA is trying to shut them down, and while the EPA is trying to shut them down, they're giving Marin Clean Energy awards for being so clean. I mean, really, what a contradiction. The bar on the left is how many, that's their total renewable energy supply in CCA, and the bar on the left shows, that's their, those are their recs. Now, that started out as a, potentially, when they launched, they came to us and they said, "We're potentially going to use that." Potentially, that dominates, that's the majority of their clean energy. If you don't want to pick on Marin Clean Energy, we look at Lancaster, your neighbor here, the only one in SCE's territory that's launched, that I'm, there may be another one that's about to launch. This is, they advertise on the left, 599 pounds of greenhouse gas per kilowatt hour, per megawatt hour, that's what they advertise. Their actual, when you account for the recs, is over 800 pounds. So they tell you that on the left, they're delivering that on the right. This is a message, and I want you to look at this, and then I'm going to wrap up here. This is an email that I got from the chairman of the California Air Resources Board, Mary Nichols. And I sent her an email several years ago, and I said, "You know, this is what's going on, these guys are buying these recs, and then they're out greening everybody with them. They're out greening PG&E with recs. PG&E doesn't use recs. Neither does Edison, they can't, they just, they're not allowed..." they're not allowed to." And I sent that to her and I said, "So, what do you think?" And she wrote back, if you can read that, she goes, "Whatever they're doing, it has nothing to do with AB 32. It may be consumer fraud, but that's not my jurisdiction." That's from the chairman of the Air Resources Board about CCA. And you don't hear about that. You hear about the Yellow Brick Road on the way to the land of Oz. People want to do, they want to do recs. Why? Just very quickly, they're about half the cost of genuine clean energy. They're about half the cost. And you fool and bamboozle consumers and they don't know. There is a law that was passed last year, AB 1110. It's trying to outlaw recs. It's getting implemented right now. The stakeholders are fighting like crazy at the California Energy Commission to change it, to give themselves permission to continue business as usual. We don't know what's going to happen with that and it'll be another year or probably until it gets fully implemented. So in summary here, Madam Mayor, the savings are minimal and it will affect your property taxes. Ask me about that in the Q and A. Clean isn't. And there are sequel lawsuits out there that I think are looming. Opt-out choice, not really what I would call a lot of integrity. The JPA agreements make it all but impossible for municipalities to get out if they want to get out. Or, if you get fired, you still have to pay the darn liabilities off. And the last is the consultants. Those are the guys who are running around the back, running these things, while we all wonder, "What the heck's going on? Oh, we just got clean energy." Because the consultants told us it was clean and it's not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Ms. Hardy, would you like to go ahead?
Wanted to ask the same question I asked the other gentleman, which is, why, from your perspective, would Southern California Edison be supportive of creating competition?
Okay. So, what happened in 2010, there was a staff manager at Pacific Gas and Electric. And he sent an email out to a customer and he warned that customer about CCA. And said, "Hey, this is coming up. You know, just wanted you to know." And Marin Clean Energy got that and boy, did they play victim with it. And they went to the California Energy Commission, to the Public Utilities Commission. And the Utilities Commission slammed all of the IOUs and said, "You are not to say anything negative about CCA at all." And you know what's funny? I called SCE the other day because I wanted to check one of their rates. I said, "I got a question for you. It's about CCA. Could you help me out?" She said, "Sure." She put me right through to Lancaster Choice Energy. Because they don't want to talk about it. They can't. As I say, the CPUC has said, "Knock it off." So, to answer your question, I don't know if they are, but I do know behind the scenes, they've been told, "You knock it off or we're going to fine that out of you and somebody's going to lose their job."
I have a question, Mr. Phelps. My understanding from the talks that I've been to on this is that there's different plans for different cities. There's not, there's not one plan that works for everybody. For example, Marin County, Marin County did, their focus was really more on 100% renewables. That's, they weren't doing so much for pricing. So, it doesn't have to be done a certain way. That, that's my point.
Is there anything else or shall I respond to that?
No, please do.
Okay. So, Marin Clean Energy launched originally with a default program that was 25% renewable. And then they had a, what they called deep green. Deep green was loaded with renewable energy certificates. So it was just greenwash, dirty power that they didn't, consumers didn't know.
You mentioned at the beginning of your talk that you have numbers, or you have numbers about our city. So, my understanding from this motion is to have a study done, a CCA study done, so we could see what it would possibly do or help in the way of Huntington Beach.
You can. Now, I, and I applaud that. I understand what you're saying. I have a huge caveat for all of you. I have gone through the Los Angeles Choice Business Plan and written a very detailed 15 or 16-page exposé on it, line by line of where they're wrong. There are, I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
There are, there are mistakes in that business plan that are just basic flaws that anybody who understands a renewable energy business wouldn't make. And yet, the author of that made it. And not only did they make it in the LA Business Plan, they also made it in the Inland Choice, which is down in San Bernardino. And then they made it in the Western Riverside Council of Governments. So, this group that's writing these, and if you want, I think it may be in your packet, but I'd be happy to go through and show you where the errors are. But they're glaring and they're expensive. And they're the kind of errors that are amateur. You shouldn't make them if you know what you're doing.
Okay. Lastly, and then, Mr. Peterson, but I appreciate your comments, but there's also 71 cities that have gone ahead and gone done this as well.
That's true.
And nine counties. Right? Okay. Mr. Peterson?
And by the way, I don't know if there's 71 that have actually jumped in or not. I don't know the number. So I don't want to say I agree with you. I just know that there are counties that have gone ahead. I will also say, one of the gentlemen earlier talked about Danville and said, "Hey, you know, Danville, I mean, they looked at this, it took a long time." And I wasn't sure if he was saying that they were done to due diligence and they weren't quite sure what was going on. But I will just say, as Marin Clean Energy expands and it goes in, they have, Marin Clean Energy has a sales force. And they go out and they show their slick brochures and shows how green they are. They don't show the red bars. They show the green bars. They show, "Here's our greenhouse gases, not this." And they show it to well-intentioned elected officials and they don't know any difference. And they say, "Yeah, let's go."
Okay. Mr. Peterson and then Mr. O'Connell.
Yes, and this could be either, either one. So, when, if we don't have the, the local power generation here, because we don't, we're not, we don't have anything. So we buy from Lancaster Wind Farm, Palm Springs Wind Farm or something. My, I, I'm a simple electrician. How do you get the electrons from there to here? The power that we're actually buying? Because I don't see how you actually can get that here.
Okay, I'll respond. And I don't want to step on his toes, but I'll respond first and then he can?
Right. I'm just saying that it seems like we're buying something that we're not actually getting.
Typically, you don't. There, depending on if the transmission and distribution system has the capability built into it, then you could actually schedule a delivery to your local energy hub. I'm not sure where that is around here, but that would be considered a local delivery. So it is possible to buy energy from a distant place and then schedule it to be delivered here. But typically, what happens is you buy energy from a distant place and then it just feeds into the grid. And the grid is all of those wires that we see crisscrossing over the LA basin and over California. And then you pull power off of that. So you would be greening the grid, but not necessarily greening your local, what you think is a destination point. Go ahead.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Just that the milkshake analogy that was provided by one of the constituents is accurate. Depending on where the power is, it's in a big mix. But by buying more renewable, you support the renewable industry.
So, we're sort of subsidizing the industry that's already subsidized. I mean, renewable energy is heavily subsidized by the feds and the state and everyone else. And now we're just, by buying theirs, I mean, is there a point where they say, "Okay, we have X amount of kilowatts" and they're all sold?
You, you, I, you know what?
Who's they? Who, if we go up to them and say, "Hey, we want to buy X amount of kilowatts," how many times can they resell those same kilowatts?
They can't.
Is there anyone that says, is controlling that at least?
Okay. So remember when I talked about a rec? I said, "It's just a piece of paper." And it is. A rec was meant for one thing only. It's a compliance tool that was supposed to be used to document that you bought a certain volume of energy. And that compliance tool, which is validated by that renewable energy certificate, which shows how much power was produced, who produced it, on what date, that gets retired through a tracking agency in Utah. And it's a very good thing that they're doing.
So they do keep control of that?
So they do keep control. But let me just say this also. So that rec was meant to be a compliance tool to meet, do you know what the Renewable Portfolio Standard is? Oh, gosh, if you don't, I'm not, I don't want to, okay. The recs were meant to be a compliance tracking tool and they're meant to help you comply with a state mandate known as the Renewable Portfolio Standard. But they were never, never meant to be used to include and to show somebody or say to somebody, "Hey, we've got a wind rec. We've got wind power. And it's clean." That is, that was never the intention of renewable energy certificates.
And I need to say, just to correct the record, the LA study does not include unbundled recs, which is what Mr. Phelps is talking about. No unbundled recs are being purchased. Most, all the, all the CCAs launching today are not going to use unbundled recs. And another misstatement, the IOUs have unbundled recs today as well.
So, let's take a look at this. This is out of the LA CCE. I want you to see this. They say that no unbundled recs, this is out of page 20 of their business plan. It says, "In addition to SB 35, SB 350, increase the renewable portfolios requirement to 50% by 2030." That's correct. It says, "At this time, the amount of recs," sick, misspelling, "the amount of recs that can be used to meet the 50% RPS requirement has not been finalized." Now, I read that and for me, I just thought, if you weren't going to use recs or weren't wanting to use recs, why would you put that kind of a statement into your business plan?
There is a difference between recs and unbundled recs. The white greenwashing occurs with unbundled recs.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes, Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Can I tell you what the strengths of the programs are? The strengths of the CCAs? I don't want to be facetious. I think they've made a group of people very, very wealthy. I think that they are educating consumers such as yourselves. We wouldn't be having this conversation if they weren't here. And I think that's a cool thing that you want to know about electricity. I think that's good. I think that they are, although the CCAs would say, "We're actually driving clean energy," the clean energy is being driven at the legislative level. We have 350, which went to 50%. And there's a bill now that's going through Sacramento that's trying to get up to 100%. This is happening without CCA. Now, CCA is, could claim to be a beneficiary, but it's independent of them. I'm trying, I'm sorry, I'm trying to answer your, if I think anything else, I'll chime in. I just, I don't see a lot of benefits.
Do you have any other?
Maybe, hang on, hang on. Maybe just as a, as a competition to let the IOUs know, investor-owned utilities know that they're not the only game in town. I just don't like the way they're being, they're rolling out. These, these guys are using them for their own, not for the communities. I don't, I don't understand your question. Oh, my gosh. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Posey?
Yes, I really want to thank both speakers. Both made compelling arguments. And I want to thank you for, for me reinforcing, without a doubt, the need for us to go forward with the study. I thought I had my mind made up, but now it's less made up. And I really think that that's what served for me.
Can I, can I make one comment? Offer a comment?
I didn't have a question.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Ms. Nata, you can ask.
So, one of the questions that I had before this evening was, what is really driving the move towards doing CCAs? And this is really for both of you. You know, is it a philosophy of wanting by some more clean energy and more ability for cities and, you know, entities or municipalities to have access or make the choice to only have clean energy, for instance? Or is it truly cost, you know, lower rates for payers? And to a degree, I think you answered my question, Mr. Troy, because you said it's really not about rates. It's about community benefits, one of which is the ability to decide whether you want to, you know, purchase more clean energy or not. So, I'd like you both to address that thought.
Go ahead.
I started. You can go now.
I'm gathering my thoughts. Please, take the mic.
Yeah, I don't care if the rates are equal to the investor-owned utility. The benefits from, from having the end-user programs and the, and the rate control to impact your community policies and goals are the important thing. I will say that most CCAs probably aren't focusing on that. That, our goal in LA is to focus on that. And as I said in my conclusion, let's not over-obsess about rates. If it's, if it's equal or if it's a percent lower, it's the community impacts that are going to be the real benefit.
And I guess, before you answer, Mr. Phelps, I guess what I have a problem with in hearing that is, this was being sold to us when it came up last time to consider it because it would save our businesses and residents money. And so, I think that's interesting. And I think, you know, it's something that Mr. Posey has been talking about when we're talking about CalPERS and investing and should they be looking at social policy decisions on how they make their investments. I think it's similar. There's an analogy that we can make here. Should we, as a city, be looking at only purchasing clean energy? Because that's kind of a philosophical decision in my, you know, my thought.
If, if you're clean energy-driven, then certainly CCA gives you the opportunity to make those choices. And oh, by the way, CCAs are saving more, are saving their constituents now. They're saving money right now. So, what a great, what a great additional benefit. But it's not the only benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps?
So, your question originally was what was driving it. CCAs are sold and pre-sold a year, two, three ahead of time. There are groups who come out and sell CCAs direct to you and direct to your staff. They, they take a long-term approach on selling them. What's driving them has been a, this sales force. And a lot of these people who've gone out and started selling have now left and come back around as consultants. Now, here's an example of how this is sold. The, in the recitals, and this is from LA, this is from LA CCE's JPA. And this language is lifted out of all of the JPAs that I've looked at. It's nothing specifically wrong about LA. They all copied the same language. But if you look on there, it says, "The California Air Resources Board is promulgating. They're promoting and writing and getting ready to try to implement regulations to implement AB 32, Global Warming Solutions Act, that will require local governments to develop programs to reduce greenhouse gas emissions." Now, I don't have anything wrong with reducing greenhouse gas emissions or wanting to. But, let's be honest about it. I took that sentence and I sent it to Mary Nichols at the Air Resources Board. And I said, "Hey, I recently read CARB is promulgating and they're requiring local governments." And her response back to me within a few minutes, I was delighted. It was November. It was right around Thanksgiving, I remember. And she said, "We're not preparing any regulations to require local governments to reduce." What the heck is that doing in a document? And then she goes on to say, "The only possible factual basis would be if the city owned a power plant." And I get that.
Okay. Mr. Posey and then Mr. Brendan.
Ed, one quick comment. I think that we're getting off track here. And I think the mission tonight wasn't to really discuss the merits of a CCA. It was a study session to help us make some conclusions on whether or not to proceed with an NDA and embark on a study. And I'm being disagreed with, but if we want to debate the CCA, I think the debate for the CCA follows whether or not we're actually going to pursue a CCA. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Brendan and Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, just a quick question. I heard Mr. Troy mention the savings of 5% on the total bill. And I heard Mr. Phelps indicate 5% on just 30% of the bill that's related to generation. Are, is that just different perspectives on this? Different opinions? Or did I hear that wrong?
I stand by what I said.
I authored the report using the consultant's results and it is 5%, at least in the Phase One study, 5% of the total bill. We want to explain savings on pieces of the bill.
So if it was 5% of the total bill, and in your case, you said that 50% of the bill is the generation portion, then you're actually saying 10% on the generation?
That's what we're saying. And on the 30%, 50%, it varies by what customer class you're in.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I just had one question. So if you're buying long-term contracts, energy contracts, let's say we save more energy or we use more energy in either, in either place, does the CCA, like, let's say we use more energy than we thought we were going to use. How's that work? Do we just pay the difference to someone? Or if we use less, do we get a credit back? How's the, how do these contracts work? I mean, we have to guess what I mean, we have to guess what people are going to be using.
Yeah, that's what they-
I mean, not guess, there, there's, there's a lot, lot that goes into it, I'm sure, but what happens with that if we underestimate?
Well, when they get the NDA, they will do, if you execute an NDA, they will look at the data, and they'll evaluate that data over the course of a year, and they'll look at what your load is at Christmas time, when you're using a lot of lights and, and energy, and they'll look at it maybe during the summertime, when you don't use as much energy. So, they would go on the spot, if they were short, they'd go on the spot market and buy makeup power if they had to.
So there is opportunity to buy more?
Of course.
Yes.
Not get back, but buy more.
And if you're long, you sell it back into the market.
You can sell it back?
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we will adjourn to closed session.
Actually, Mayor, we have another study session, too, and I-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's the question. So we have 25 minutes, I think this, this part of the presentation will be at least 15 or 20 minutes, maybe, maybe a little shorter. And then I think we have a couple of items for our-
I'm sorry, I thought this was under the other session.
I assume we can move that to the end of the meeting? Mr. City Attorney? So we'll try to get through this in about 10 or maybe 15 minutes, and then-
All right, then I won't adjourn, we'll have the-
Shift gears.
We'll have the presentation, Mr. Erble.